You got a horse clicking in.
I want to call the Board of Aldermen meeting to order for the City of Warrenton on August 19th, 2014. If everyone will stand face to flag, Alderman Castily will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which ascends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is approval of minutes for the executive session minutes from July 15th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from July 15th, 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Sluter, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the executive session minutes from July 15th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Abstain, I was not here.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Abstain.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two abstentions. Item three B, regular board meeting minutes from August 5th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular board minute, meeting minutes from August 5th, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sluter, seconded by Alderman Holly to approve the regular board meeting minutes from August 5th, 2014. Any discussion or changes or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Abstain.
Alderman Ock?
Abstain.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two abstentions. Item four on the agenda gives the public a chance to address the Board of Aldermen. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the Board, please come forward at this time and state your name. I don't see anybody that wants to talk to us. Les Kim wants to have a few words. Doesn't look like it. We'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. And maybe we'll start down here with Alderman Clark.
I have nothing.
Alderman Ock?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
No.
Nothing.
I'm looking.
Alderman Dreyer? We're easy tonight. We're going to extend that same courtesy to the mayor. And I've just got one item that I want to re- remind the Board about. We are going to have a real short public hearing on August 26th on a Tuesday, starting at six o'clock. And it's a public hearing to address our tax ordinance and it'll probably last five minutes?
Maybe five.
Maybe five minutes. So, just as a reminder and a reminder to the public that they're welcome to be here too, but it'll be a short meeting. We wind up doing this every year. We have to have that done by when? The end of August?
September 1st.
September 1st, okay. Okay. And that's all I've got.
Okay, and then I've got to step back because Mr. Ock reminded me. We have another fair queen, state fair queen-
That's right.
-to acknowledge for the City of, well, County of Warrenton, Warren County, I guess, with Hannah Keane. Couldn't believe it, two years in a row, so...
What's the odds?
What is the odds for that? So, maybe a bigger sign.
But I think we need to do very similar to what we did for the Ashley Bauer the year before. And we could, we'll do a proclamation, invite her here.
Yep.
We need to add another thing to the sign.
Yep.
So, is everybody good with that?
Okay, good. Thanks for reminding me.
Thanks.
And I'm on item seven, introduction of new employees. Chief, you want to take that first one?
Well, Ashley Corey is not here. He got called up to Ferguson with the National Guard.
Okay. We'll catch him in the next meeting then. And how about James Shackelford?
He's not here either.
He's not here either?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll get him in the next meeting then. Maybe. We're going to move down to item eight. Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer.
My first item for you this evening is a request for approval to hire Jessica Black as administrative assistant, special events, at $12 per hour.
Make a motion, we hire Jessica Black as the assistant, administrative assistant/special events at $12 an hour.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Sluter to approve the hiring of Jessica Black as administrative assistant/special events at $12 an hour. Any discussion? Is Jessica here?
No, this is her hiring. She doesn't start for another, I believe it's next week, middle of next week.
Middle of next week.
So, we'll have her on for next meeting.
Good. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
My next item for you this evening is a request for approval of the fuel bid tabs. We sent out to seven vendors, posted it, ran an ad. As typical, we got one response for the fuel, which is from Thaley. The bonus in this is that they have gotten our bid for several years now, as they typically are the only bidder, but they're giving us a 16 cent per gallon discount for the first 90 days. So, that's a plus for us. Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fuel bid from Thaley Inc. Or is it Thaley?
I don't know, I never know how to-
I call it Thaley.
For a rate of eight cents for unleaded and I guess eight cents for diesel with a discount for the first 90 days.
Just to clarify, it's not eight cents a gallon discount? I would extend the bid for like 20 years of those eight cents.
That'd be great.
Please don't put that in.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the only bid from Thaley Oral Inc. at unleaded gasoline at eight cents discount above the posted pump price and at eight cent discount on the posted diesel pump price. Does that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, sure does.
And just to clarify things too for the public, is this all of our fuel or is this just fuel for our maintenance vehicles?
It's all of the fuel at the pump. The other fuel that we have is diesel that's delivered to specific locations, to the maintenance shed, to the treatment plant, and it's done differently because it has to be delivered. But this is diesel at the pump and gasoline at the pump.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
My next item is a request for approval for the auto repair and service bid. Annually, we bid this out. We did have three bidders for components of this this year. Warrenton Tire and Muffler is the low bidder with an hourly rate for vehicle repairs. Gastor Chevrolet is the low bidder for oil changes, filter, and lube. My recommendation to you is that we award the repair service to Warrenton Tire and Muffler as the low bidder and oil changes, filter, and lube to Gastor Chevrolet as the low bidder.
Why not Valvoline?
Valvoline has not really done any kind of contracted work that we could track back to be able to determine whether or not, they also do not have any kind of ASE technicians. And I don't know how important that is for oil changes, other than the fact that when they do the oil change, they also look for any other kind of mechanical problems that might be arising.
How many places do we send this out to or do we not send the bid out?
Oh, yeah, we send it out to every, all of the mechanic shops in town, put the ad out in the newspaper, just like we do everything else. And we typically get very few responses.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the recommendation from Director of Operations/Finance Officer on the bid for auto repair and service and oil change.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Sluter to approve the recommendation of Director of Operations/Finance Officer to accept the bid for oral changes from Gastor Chevrolet and the bid for all gas vehicle services worked for Warrenton Tire and Muffler. Any other questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
My next item for you is a request for approval of an updated controlled substance and alcohol testing policy. We recently did some review of our existing policy and found this policy actually on MML's website as a sample. It's much more comprehensive than what we previously had in place and addresses some areas to clarify and make it much more specific related to our alcohol and drug testing. So, I think this will serve us with more clarity in the future.
I did have a question on 4.1.1.
Okay.
It lists the following, employees are subject to random control sampling. And it looks like, unless I'm reading this wrong, it's only employees with a commercial driver's license, is that right?
Right.
So, why wouldn't we want to do random sampling of people who are just driving a regular vehicle who didn't have, who just have a regular license?
We can certainly add that, if that's something you all would like to do. This follows the requirement for the CDLs per DOT, but if we want to add in random sampling for, you know, all of the employees of the city, we can certainly amend it to do that. Yeah, that is not something we've typically done in the past, so...
Well, but I mean, all employees who drive a city, who in the normal course of their job would drive a city vehicle?
We can certainly add that.
I mean...
I'm in big favor-
I'm in favor also, Gary.
...of Gary's suggestion. I think we make it across the board, makes the policy stronger for everybody.
Yeah, what I'd recommend we do is if you guys can approve this policy tonight, then we'll add it for the next meeting, just so we have this up to date one, because there's some, we kind of had a hodgepodge policy before that had some inconsistencies. We're actually going to bring some other things back, hopefully next meeting to make sure that it's tight and it's all consistent across the board. So, I'd still ask you guys to approve this and we'll bring the updated one. And I think that makes a lot of sense for all drivers to random.
Do we want all drivers or do we want all employees?
Well, I mean, it's a safety issue. I mean, so in theory, you could have an employee who doesn't drive, but it could be impaired in some way, and should that employee be covered under the policy?
But any employee could drive a city vehicle for training. They make runs to the bank. So, I think if you want to do that, you may get all employees.
So, you're going to prepare something for the next meeting?
Yes.
And we're going to approve this policy or take a vote on it?
Make a motion that we approve the controlled substance and alcohol testing policy as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Sluter to approve the controlled substance and alcohol testing policy as presented. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
My next item for you is a request for approval to refinance the certificates of participation from the 2005 and 2009 series. Joy Howard, who works with us on loans and financial type situations, looked at both of these COPs. Both of them recently have become callable, so if we want to refinance them, we have the opportunity to do so. She looked at what, if we were to refinance both of these, what the potential savings to the city would be. And this is looking at not a refinancing with reissue of bonds. That would be prohibitive because of the bond issuance costs. But this would be refinancing with basically a bank lease type loan, much like a regular bank loan that any of us would obtain. At a 2.25 interest rate, anticipated savings would be approximately $56,000 over both of those loans. Really, there is little expense that is typical from a normal refinancing of this type. Potential for Gilmore and Bell to prepare all the legal documents of about $19,000 and for Joy Howard to do all of the offering documents, the bidding and analysis of the received proposals of $3,500. That is net and included in the $56,000 figure, so it's already out of there. It's possible that the Gilmore and Bell fee could be lower. As she would bid this, we would ask the banks, when they submit their proposals, to tell us if they have the ability to provide all the legal documents. If they can, then that $19,000 could be lower, but we won't know that until we get the proposals back. So, my request for you this evening is if you have an interest in refinancing these, to give that approval and then later on this evening, under ordinances, there is an approval for Joy Howard's agreement to do the refinancing on this.
That's your horse. Click it.
I know, but why?
It just doesn't every meeting.
Do you want a motion on this? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we would authorize the Director of Operations to proceed with the refinancing of the certificates of participation.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Holly to authorize the Director of Operations to proceed forward with the refinancing of 2005 and 2009 certificates of participation. We're having speaker problems, we're trying to-
That's what it sounds like his horse.
Yeah, clicking away. In the meantime, we'll do a roll call, vote on it.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six, zero.
I don't think you're picking it up on the TV, are you? You are?
Sounds like a clock ticking. Just laid down.
I think I just found it.
Did you?
Yes.
We're good. Okay. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. My next item is to provide you information on a proposal received from Mr. Wilson, who's here this evening with Wilson Ways. It is for proposed contract renewal that would extend the current contract for five years. All of the current services would stay at their current cost. There would be no increase. Several times, the Board has discussed citywide recycling, so I've provided you with numbers on what that cost would be, what that addition would be. Again, at the same rate, which is a dollar 25 per household that would be involved in the recycling, which is all of the residential and senior single family. So, it does not involve any of the multifamily areas, none of the multifamily complexes. You have on the probably third page, I think, of what you have, information at the top about the proposed contract amounts, which again are the same as what we currently have. There is one additional possibility that's been added, which is the bulky item pickup. When we started discussing the potential to have the cleanup day, which you all had talked about in the strategic plan, one of the things we talked about doing was having a day where residents could put out large items and we would have those picked up. Well, in speaking with Mr. Wilson, what we learned very quickly was, that's a very expensive proposition. He's done this in several other cities, and his low estimated price is about $40,000 for large item pickup for that one day. So, in his proposal, what he brought us was an opportunity to consider offering this bulky item pickup five times a year, with the resident calling in and scheduling the pickup, and then his truck will go by and pick those items up, thus not having them sitting around until it's time for the annual cleanup day. So, that's the addition that's offered here, above and beyond what we previously had. As I said, Mr. Wilson's here, if you have questions about his proposal or the large item pickup.
Don't we currently, like, one day a month have a larger item day where you can put something out? Don't we currently do that?
No, it's not currently in the contract, no.
Okay.
You can call and-
Call and have them.
They have to call in and pay an additional $20 to have that item picked up.
Okay.
I might mention something too, and for the public's information, I think your trash contract's coming up in December?
The current contract with the city is the end of this year, correct?
End of this year.
Yes.
And we have an option to extend that contract without rebidding this out? Am I correct on this?
Yes, the way the contract was written was that it could be extended and renewed as long as the pricing remained the same.
The same.
So, if Mr. Wilson had come back with an increase in contract price, then we would have been forced to the bid process.
All right.
So, is this a current rate for five years for all the services, including businesses too, apartments?
Yeah, the apartments are included, yes.
What about-
So, the current, the current unit price for those are also included in that.
So, the single, the multifamily is all fixed for five years?
It's the same rate for five years. Correct, the trash pickup for them, the multifamilies is set at the same rate. And then the other new services that would be added on, if you decide to go with the bulky pickup for everybody and having the five items per year that they can call in, that rate is also fixed for the five-year period also.
Would you keep the accounting records on how many times I call in for bulky items?
Yes, we'll have those records and those will be available. What we would do at the end of each year is give the staff a report of how many items, if they wanted by address or how they want it. That could be done with no problem for us.
So, so if we assume for a second the public's going to pay for this, which, let's just discuss that for a second. If we are, and this is for bulky items, a buck 70 a month?
If you, if you don't take, right now, currently, I think in the city right now, we have the recycling program's a dollar 25, and are currently about 700 homes are doing that program. If we leave that in place, and, which the price would stay the same on that current service, then you would add a dollar 70 on. If you want to go ahead and have everybody have recycling for the dollar 25, the additional, around 1,600 homes, give or take what the exact number is, would pay the additional dollar 25, and then the bulky service then would go to a dollar 25 for everybody. So, there would be a reduction of doing that. If you don't want to do that and you leave it the way it currently is, then the bulky service would be a dollar 70 per unit, per month. And then they're allowed to put out five items. They call us, they get five items per year, whatever it is, there's no limit on what that would be. Could be appliances, you know, mattress box springs, you know, dresser, you know, kitchen table and chairs, all that kind of stuff. All appliances.
So, does each individual resident have the choice to do the bulky pickup or the recycling?
Correct, each resident then would be allowed to call in and get rid of five items per year. They would call us and have us take care of that, and then we would set that up and keep track of that in the system.
But is that something that if Gary wants to pay for it each month, he can pay for that option, do I have to pay for it?
No, it was set up for everybody.
Okay.
All units pay it.
So, I guess, I'm a little confused in the sense of, is it a dollar 70 or a dollar 25?
It's depending on what's, which way you all want to go with it. If you want to keep it just the way it is right now and nothing changes on your current services that you have, it would be the dollar 70. If you want to add recycling in to the other 1,600 homes that don't have recycling, then they would pay the dollar 25 extra, and it would be a dollar, a dollar 25 for both of those. You see what I'm saying?
So, I mean, it seems like on the bulky side, if it's a dollar 70 times 12, that's $20. But if somebody needed something picked up right now, you would charge 25.
It's, it's, it would be a $20 charge right now for each item they would have. So, basically, what happens right now is $20 per item. So, in theoretical sense, if you have five items, you're looking at, you know, $100. So, this way here, it would only cost them the dollar 25 or a dollar 70 a month, depending on which way you all want to go with it. So, they could, they could get the other four for no cost.
I mean, it seems, I was just curious as to how many items an average family would dispose-
That's where I'm going.
If the average family would dispose of one a year, you know, why would they want to do the bulky thing?
Well, the, the issue you're dealing with is that a lot of people haven't been able to have that service, and a lot of people call and talk to us at the office and don't want to pay the extra $20 to get that taken care of. And they, and a lot of people, when you go out and buy stuff anymore today, a lot of furniture places don't take all that stuff, so if you buy something, you're going to have multiple items. So, it's unusual to have households that have two or three items a year, you know, because it covers everything from appliances all the way to household furnishings. So, you have a huge array of products that we would pick up for them. Everything from a hot water heater to a refrigerator to a mattress and box springs and a dresser, a desk. So, there's a huge list of items that would be included in that list, the bulky stuff that they would take. So, it does cover quite an aspect of what you're dealing with for each resident to be able to do that.
Do you have any data to show what we've done and what our residents have done in the past as far as requesting?
The actual ones that, I don't have that with me, no. I don't know, I don't know, have the exact number of what, who has actually signed up and paid for it. You know, there's, there's, I don't have those numbers with me.
Okay, I was just curious. So, currently, we're paying $9.15 for trash, and if anybody elects to do recycling on their own, they pay a dollar 25.
That is correct.
Correct.
And then there's a city fee, obviously, for the billing purposes on it. This is what we bill you all.
Right. I have a really hard time increasing anybody's bill without any kind of feedback that they've, no one has really asked me for bulky pickup. We like to get rid of some of the trash in town, but I don't know that that's going to happen with the bulky pickup.
And if you're, if you don't want to do that portion of it, then you don't have to do that portion of it. You can leave it just exactly the way we're currently doing it and do the extension without that issue being in there.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of how I'm leaning.
And that's, that's, it's offered either way. It's however, whatever you all want to do.
And if we leave it as is, it's going to increase to a dollar 70.
If you leave it the way it is-
It's not going to be there.
Then that, the dollar 70, if you want the bulky service, it would be that. If you don't want to do the bulky service, then it would just, the current rates we currently charge for the current services would stay the same for the five-year period. That's what I was talking about. If you want to skip the bulky.
If we left it just as it is, that we're really telling the public, we're not going to do anything with the recycling.
Well, no, that's different.
Is that different?
Well, the recycling's a different issue.
Correct, recycling is a different issue. If you, if you want to do the recycling portion of it and not the bulky, it's a dollar 25 for the recycling, either way you go. So, if you don't want to do the bulky and just want to add on, everybody have a recycling, then you do the dollar 25 for the remaining units that don't have recycling, and then we provide recycling service for everybody in town.
But there's a cost for the recycling bins upfront.
Well, when we were talking about the bins, what I had talked to staff about doing is we were talking about maybe having the city fund for those bins, having the city buy the bins for everybody in town to have another bin.
So, but are you talking about the current bins we have?
Correct, the little recycle bins, the little containers.
So, you wouldn't have to buy 2,500 bins because 700 people already have bins?
Correct, so what the city would do is, is that, well, what I was going to do is, I suggested we just supply everybody with a bin, and everybody would have one. If somebody has two or some older ones, because the city didn't supply those previously, and we talked about staff, you know, you all supplying the bins for that. If you don't want to do that, you don't have to, and the residents can supply their own container. That's what the dollar 25 really does.
So, if I want to do a recycle, I could take my own trash can, mark it recycle, and put put it out there. It doesn't have to be in a special bin?
It doesn't have to be in a special container, that's what we do currently right now. If you all want a bigger container, and you're not leaning towards the bulky pickup, in the same program, what I would do is we will supply you for two twenty-five, we'll supply you a dollar extra, you get the sixty-four gallon cart. Now, the residents don't have to use it, but it's included in the basic price. So that's that big blue container that goes on recycling and stuff that we have with, I think some of you are familiar with what we're talking about. And what that does is that allows the resident to be able to, real quick, I got a picture of a trash cart and a recycle cart, it'd be this blue one we're talking about here. This blue sixty-four gallon container would be included for the extra dollar, and then everybody could get one of those, and then I take care of that, I would buy those, and then we'd need twenty-five hundred of those to cover everybody in town. And then on top of each one of those containers is a list of what they're supposed to do, and on top of that container, I thought I threw it in here, on top of each one of them has this embedded in the lid, and there's a list of all the rules, this is what they're all supposed to do. So that's right along, it's embedded, it's sheeted over to the container, so that way there, it won't come off, it won't peel off, and they can see that and have it there all the time to be able to tell them what to do, how to put it in there, what to do, you put everything in there mixed together, you don't have to keep everything separated or any of that kind of stuff like that. And that alone by itself is, each one of these are almost fifty bucks apiece for my cost. So I would buy these for the extra dollar, and then I would deliver all those to the residents, so the residents would have those. Now, we've had people talk about in the past that they're not wild about having that bigger container, the residents can still use a bin or a smaller container if they don't want to use it, we'll still pick that up. So if you have a senior by themselves that doesn't want this bigger container, they can still use the bin, and we'll still take care of it for them.
I mean, my thoughts on the bigger containers, I mean, we've been recycling for years, we've got three people in the house, typically, we never, rarely fill the smaller container, we're pretty conscientious about it, so I can't see the function of the bigger container that it would be that much of a benefit to the majority of people, that's why, I mean...
Well, the biggest function part, what happens is it conceals the container, all the material's inside that container, so when the wind blows, it's not blowing down the street or issues like that, it kind of contains the material a little bit easier for everybody, but it's not required. Again, it's a dollar a month, you know, it's an extra twelve dollars a year that has to be funded to cover the cost of that container, and that's basically, you know, how you set it up, so it's up to you guys on how you want to handle that.
Are you giving the citizens an opportunity to say, yes, I want the big bin, and I'll pay the extra money?
Currently, we do that right now.
Or no, I'll keep the small bin, I'm not going to pay the extra money.
Right, they can, though the dollar would be included in all, everybody pays the extra dollar. Because like billing purposes, it would be difficult to say, this one has a bin, this one has a cart, I mean, that would be, it would be really difficult to, for the staff to be able to do that every month.
So everybody's going to pay?
Everybody pays the extra dollar, and if they don't, if there's somebody who doesn't want it, then unfortunately, it's included in the service.
I got you.
It'd be tough for staff to go through, and this month I want one, and the next two months later I don't want it, it would be a lot of extra work for staff to try to go through and keep track of all that.
Well, here's kind of where I'm leaning too, I think we sit off, hold off on the bulky bin stuff, because I'd like to see how many households request you get, not how many people actually pay the money, not how many ask.
Well, I don't have an actual record of how many actually called, but I can start keeping track of that for you all if I'm going to do that.
I have a different opinion of the recycle, I think the city should pick up the cost of everybody recycling. Currently, the people recycling are paying, that would be the thirty-six thousand on the sheet, seven hundred dollars plus the current people, which is about another eleven. I think the city should provide that as a service to recycle for everybody, because what you're doing is people who are conscientious, you're penalizing by making them pay for it. So why not just let everybody recycle and the city pick it up? I mean, I'll be honest with you, I had a lot of people really complain to me when the city took away free trash pickup, and it's still an issue with people, but I can see how that is a bigger number, but I think it would soften the blow a little bit if the city picked up all the recycling costs for the city.
I agree with you, Gary.
I disagree with you. I was on the board when we went to charging the citizens for their trash pickup, and at that time, I was in favor of doing it a little bit at a time. Actually, I was really in favor of not doing it at all, but if I had to go one way or the other, it was a little ahead of time. We went through all that, we got through it, I had very little repercussion coming back to me. I don't want to go back and do what you're saying for a year or two, or whatever, a year, and have to come back and ask for that dollar or something back, or two dollars, whatever it will be at that time. It's kind of like when we did the, you were on the board that time, Gary, when we dropped the personal property tax and then reinstated it. I got a lot of repercussion over that.
Well, let's just go on to...
And the people I know, when we had the trash pickup and it didn't cost any extra to the residents, I'd say there was only about twenty percent to thirty percent of people actually using the recycling. You can't make them recycle.
A third of the people are using recycling, the question is, how much of those people would start recycling if there was an option for free?
Maybe a few, but I would say wouldn't, I don't think you'd have that much of an increase. The people who want a recycle are willing to pay the dollar and a quarter.
Well, I think it's worth it, I mean, if we, if the total cost of the city picking up all recycling is forty-eight thousand dollars, and the city can't afford it on a ten million dollar budget, we have a bigger issue. I mean, that's not a huge, huge ticket item.
Is that the total cost, forty-eight thousand for free recycling?
Yeah, and it's locked in for five years.
Does that include buying the bins too?
I think we just let them provide the bins.
Let the customer provide?
No, well, he said he would provide the bins, right?
On the big container, not on the little ones, not the little ones, no. At the dollar twenty-five, that's not me covering the cost, we talked about the city covering the cost of those bins, and one bid that I got from a company that we supply for twenty-five hundred recycled bins delivered to my office was eighteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars.
Well, it's a one-time cost.
So it's either, I was, at the dollar twenty-five, it's just hard for us to be able to fund that and cover that cost and pick up the service and do everything for the recycling for it, for the dollar twenty-five.
But if we renewed your contract for five years, could you consider getting us a break on that?
I could, if the city wants to buy it, then I would knock it off the bill every month at a certain percentage, if the city wants to fund them back.
That's just cash flow.
Yeah, that's just for us.
That's not saving us anything.
It's difficult for me to finance these things, because nobody wants to finance these kind of containers. So I mean, I have no problem with doing that, if the city wants to pay for them, and then we knock so much a month off the bill every month to cover them over twelve months or something like that, that's fine, we can do that.
That's an issue between you and Jerry.
Is there a way to find out how many people really need those? Because we've lived here for twenty years, and I've got three of them, from the different years, when it's come and gone, how many other people have these sitting in their garage?
I've got two of them.
Well, you can use your own.
I do use them, but I don't need another one.
I, I myself, there are so many different containers that people can buy at Walmart for a couple bucks, they can use their other containers, like you're talking about, you've got three, you've got two, a lot of people have those in town over the last several years, I hear a lot of people talking about it. I don't see a need to spend the money. I, you know, it's not something that has to be done. If later on, if you guys do this and the residents start wanting them, then we can work on that issue as we go later on down the road, something with it later, all of a sudden you have a bunch of people wanting a bin, then we can work on that issue as we go forward.
I mean, I think if people are educated, that this is free recycling, and they can use whatever bin they have of their own, and they're educated that fact, I think people would use what they have.
And like, a lot of people do it now, I mean, a lot of people use the bin plus other containers right now, and that's what a lot of them do, so I don't think it's something we have to have.
Haven't heard much on this, the end of the board. Any comments? Jim?
I think we're saying stuff to John, like John said, there's people that want to recycle, already doing it, you know, the rest of them I've heard, they don't care if it's free or not, they're not going to recycle, they don't want to pass, will separate the stuff, they just want to throw in trash, and that's it.
Alderman Sluter?
I mean, what do we say initial figures, is twenty-two percent of the people right now recycling?
Proportionally.
And I understand, it's on the sheet here, but I mean, I understand your point as well, all in all, I mean, if it's available, there may be more people that will be, that figure's a skewed number that we won't be able to understand until we see it or hear from it, but if I remember right, talking to some Aldermen before in a different city, being St. Charles, I think they provided the bins for them, and they did see an increase in a lot of people recycling, so, but I think that was due to a surplus that they did a vote on, and they actually provided the bigger bins, like you were saying, the bigger blue bins, for the city there.
Yeah, the bigger container will increase tremendously the volume in most locations. Usually, it's anywhere between a sixty and seventy-five percent increase in the tonnages when you supply the bigger container. But also, it's cost factors, I mean, it's a lot more expensive to have those, you know, containers, like we were talking about with, you know, with people's budgets and stuff, and what you all want to do.
Alderman Holley?
I'm in support of us attempting it for free.
For free. Alderman Kestrel?
She's doing math.
I'm doing math. I am very hesitant about giving recycling away for free and then having people that don't use that, if we're going to give them any kind of discount, I'd almost rather give them a discount on the trash price, because everybody's got trash. That's the math I was trying to figure out, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that you're going to get a ton more people recycling because you give them the option.
But you don't know that you're not.
You don't know.
I mean, historically, most places I've seen where they have a service, there has been an increased number of people participating, I mean, could you confirm that?
Oh, yes, you'll have more people using the service, I mean, I don't know in town what percentage you're going to have, but in general, it's a substantial increase in service.
So I mean, we have an increase in service, we have an increase in service in recycling, and I hate to be a negative weed about this, but this has irritated me since all this was changed in the first place. More people down the street are recycling, so it takes very minimal amount of additional staff to pick up Tony's tub, my tub, my neighbor's tub, and from a recycling standpoint, then you're making more money off of the recycling, because you've been honey on the recycling.
We don't make it, no, we do not, we do not make a dime off recycling, have it for almost two years.
So you send it off, you make money?
We take it to resource management in our city, and for two years, we haven't got a dime. And I can get that verified from them, they'd be happy to send you a letter to verify that. We haven't received, the market has been really bad for a long period of time, and don't anticipate, I don't anticipate the next three years having any kind of an increase in what we're getting off of that. It's definitely, there's no money we're making off of it at all. So our cost that we have picking it up, we're picking that material up and then hauling it all with a resource in our city, and that's why I was talking about the price of the bins, you know, it's a substantial amount of money for us to try to buy those bins when there's no other profit on those items that we're making. So you take the dollar twenty-five times twelve and divide by fifty-two, that's what we're getting per pickup for each item, and that has to cover everything we're spending on that, there's no extra money coming in.
Let me make a motion that we renew the contract with Wilson Waste for five years and that we pick up recycling at no cost to the residents.
Before we proceed there, can I ask one question? When do we actually have to, how long do we have to, we have to approve this?
The current contract ends at the end of December.
So we have till December to actually approve this, if we need to?
You're correct, you don't, I mean, you don't have to make a decision tonight.
I think I'd be a little more comfortable maybe setting out a survey to see, to our constituents.
Because I'm looking at, and if you get another twenty percent increase of people recycling, is it worth forty-eight thousand dollars?
Forty-eight thousand.
Well, you know, John, I can argue that.
I mean, we invest money in trees to make this a better community, we do all this other stuff to make it a better community, we put bags out so people can pick up the dog feces in the park, we do all these things to create a better community, and I think recycling is part of creating a better community, that's my feel.
One of the things I want to say to the board, I don't know if this clarifies it or makes it more confusing, but the board can't obligate the city to an expenditure beyond year-to-year, so when we write this and bend them into the contract, it has to have the ability to say as long as the city funds it. So a future board would have the ability to say, we're not going to fund this portion of the recycling for the next year. Now, I just want to say practically speaking, it really is only a year-to-year obligation, so that's the point I wanted to make to you guys, because you can't obligate the city next year to budget for forty-eight thousand or whatever that recycling is going to be, it'll be written in there, but the city will have the option, will have to put that in there, because that's legally required.
You know, I mean, one other point, and I'll be cut, maybe, you know, I mean, we're talking about forty-eight thousand dollars here to provide a service, I mean, this board a couple years ago, and I realize so many people around there, you know, we approved non-budgeted dollar amount for the lawyers' increase, we approved non-budgeted dollar amount for people to get insurance who are working thirty hours, so this is not that big of a deal, because we're doing it...
How's it justify the trash pickup?
Well, it justifies it if you're upset about the dollar amount, because in two meetings, we approved over forty thousand dollars of additional expenditures that weren't on the budget. My point is, if you're using costs as a justification, you can use costs as a justification on the other issues, that's my feel.
Well, I think the suggestion of tailoring it and getting some feedback from the city would be a good idea.
You want a survey type thing?
Survey, exactly. Whether they call into the city or...
Or by the help of maybe the paper, we see the...
Oh, I think putting it in the paper is a survey, no offense to the paper, but I don't think you're going to be representing the population of it.
Every week, I look for a survey to answer questions.
Well, I do too, but I don't know that that's a representative of population.
One of the things we have to look to is the contract language that requires us to give, keep notice before the first of October for renewal of the contract, so we just have to keep that in mind with regards to trying to do a survey time-wise, if we would even really have the time to do that, you know.
So if you put something on the water bill, because people, most people mail that in and have them check yes or no, would you use recycling if it were free? Do you currently use recycling, would you use it if it were free?
I don't think that the water bill is the right method, because the only part of the water bill that they return is that little tear-off portion, and there's no place to put a message. So you could put something on the bill that says, you know, go online at the city or call us or whatever, but I don't think using it as a check, yes or no, I think we defeat our purpose.
Okay.
I think we could do a couple things, we could do a Survey Monkey survey, but timing is my greatest concern, because by the time we get the survey, but together we notify the public that it's out there, we're getting really close to being in a difficult position. I think you could approve renewal of the contract and get us out of that window concern, not make the decision on what to do with the recycling, because you can decide that, I mean, it's a dollar twenty-five, one way or the other, whether we're paying it or the residents paying it, doesn't change the contract rate. And then we could do something as far as, because it would not really go into effect until January first anyway. So it would give us time to put together a survey, whether we do a mailer to everyone or a postcard, I think there's several avenues we could go about doing a survey if that's what you all want to do.
So if we approved it without the contract, without the recycling included, you would still keep the same rate?
Oh, it would stay the same, because the current service, what you basically, I'm assuming the way she's talking, is you would approve the exact same thing we're doing as of today, and then what you're going to look at is if you want to add that on, for you all paying for that and adding everybody on, that's fine with me, we don't have to make that decision tonight. If you want to go ahead and take the contract extension for the five-year period on the basic services that we have now, and then work on what you all want to do with the recycling as you move forward, that's fine.
Because that's really our internal billing thing, it really doesn't have anything to do with, because the rate's the same, the question is, do we build the dollar twenty-five out, or are we going to absorb the dollar twenty-five? And we really have until January, or whatever day you all decided to do it to start that, so it gives us some time.
I'll make a motion to...
Alderman, I've got a motion on the floor, are you willing to amend your motion?
There's been no second.
I think it died.
It died? Well, I never asked for a second.
You never asked for a second?
No. You want to repeat your motion?
It's dead, no second.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of the trash pickup bill at the current rate, and now I've lost it on my iPad, to continue the discussion about whether or not the city will provide free recycling after feedback from the community.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Alderman Kestrel, seconded by Alderman Sluter, Mel, do you want to read that back? I got lost in that transaction.
Approved the contract, revised the contract with Wilson Waste for the trash pickup, and then holding off on the-
Discuss the free recycling at a later date. Is that fair? Okay.
Well, let me understand the motion. So the last part of the motion does not mean that, that the motion approved is gonna be guaranteed, put back on the agenda at some point in the future?
How about if we plan to bring you a plan for the survey process next meeting?
Then we don't need the last part of the motion.
I was protecting you to leave that out there so we didn't get left.
I don't think it'll be forgotten. Are you-
Yes.
Okay. Drop off the recycling part of that, and read it back to us one more time till we're clear.
To approve the five-year contract with Wilson Waste for the trash pickup.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Appreciate your time.
I got lost. My next item to review is to discuss the interviews for the master plan consultants. A couple of months ago, we did RFPs, I received proposals, and staff went through a very extensive rating process to come down to the two top candidates for the master plan. Those were Striler Planning out of St. Louis and Bario out of Kansas City, Missouri. At that time, I think we had some new board members, and you all decided to wait a bit before proceeding with interviewing those candidates. So my question for you this evening is, are you at a point where you're ready to have those interviews so that we can get the master plan process moving forward?
And, and the two top candidates, is, is who's gonna be interviewed?
That's really up to you.
Up to the board.
And that's all we talked about before. Um, I think if you look at the scoring, there are two that stand out, um, at least in my mind. So, you know, you certainly could interview three if, if you chose to do that. But if, I, I just know that if we don't get this process, it's a fairly lengthy process, so if we don't start moving forward with it, it's gonna be that much further down the road before we get the master plan updated.
Well, my inclination is with, with just two, with the top two member, pricing ones.
And they're both fairly local. You know, they're not, I mean, Kansas City's not that far away, as is St. Louis, and both were very, very, um, had, definitely had the abilities to do what we need to do based upon their submissions.
Well, and the reason I wouldn't pick the third one is because they got a real low score on project approach. We're not comfortable with how they're approaching the project. We probably shouldn't use them.
Yeah. One thing I really liked, as I remembered, and it's been so long now that a lot of the specific details are left me, both of these used what they called a value-driven approach. And the way I was explaining their proposal was that a, a big component of what they will do is come out and have meetings with the public, meetings with business owners, meetings with people within the community. And then they derive their approach at completing the master plan to what our values within our city are, as opposed to the others and their approach being, well, in a city this size, you need to have X amount of this area and X amount of that area, as statistically what they believe from, you know, what the normal is. And so I feel like it's much more valuable to us as a city if it's our values for our community that are being used to drive the approach, as opposed to statistics that are from wherever else. So I think that's one of the things with these two that I was most impressed by.
Do you have a date on when you want to do the interviews?
It is really up to you. We do have in September, um, five Tuesdays, so if Tuesday is the best day. But, um, you know, I think it could be whatever date that works for all of you to be able to be here to do that. And then once we get a couple of dates from you, we'll approach both these companies and obviously make sure that, you know, that date works for them.
How do you feel about the top two candidates?
No, I agree.
Is there a, a, we've all had agreement on just interviewing the top two? Otherwise it gets to be pretty lengthy.
He's fine.
I think we're fine with that.
So, you know, it really depends on what you, day you want to do it. Um, the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth is in that last week of the month that we typically don't get. Um, there's a couple of Thursdays in there that we don't have anything scheduled, so it's really what works within all of your schedules.
Does everybody wanna, want to get, check their calendars and get back to us, or, or you want us to pick a date and see who could work around it?
All I can tell from my calendar is the first week of, of September won't work. I'm booked almost every night.
And I think that's too soon to try to get these companies in here on short notice. So I would lean towards something probably closer to the end of the month. We have a better opportunity, I think, to get them in here.
Okay. That last Tuesday in September?
That's the thirtieth.
The thirtieth. I mean, that's, I always set that Tuesdays, all Tuesdays aside for city business, so I don't know how that'll work with everybody.
It won't work for me, but I, you know, if you, if it works for everybody else.
What about the twenty-third? The week of the twenty-third.
Twenty-third doesn't work for me. I'm on vacation. But you all can do interviews at the-
I'm available the twenty-ninth, that Monday. I'm available the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth?
It don't matter for me, any day.
What?
Any day's fine.
Any day. The twenty-ninth seems like, that's fitting, fitting in pretty good.
Twenty-ninth at seven?
I, I, I've been obligated with, uh, being the governor of Lions Club for our district, uh, other than on rainy nights and stuff, a lot of, I'm busy with clothes. It's part of my obligation, and, uh, I have to check real closely to see if I have any, you know, any of my, if I can make it, I'll be, I've already made obligations to, uh, for the obligation.
So we're, we're hovering around the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Twenty-ninth.
So we, you, you, you need an exact day for, for this far out?
Are you okay?
I want to get them to confirm. I think I'm gonna have to give them a day.
Let's go with the twenty-ninth.
Okay. All right. We'll see what we can get put together.
And what, what, what time, or?
Whatever works for you all. You tell me what works, and that's what I'll give them.
What are we gonna allow them for each, or we're gonna do them both in one evening?
That would be the preference, I think.
Mine too. And, and allow forty-five minutes for each one?
Sure. So maybe one at six and one at seven?
Or, or six-thirty and seven-thirty, or either, either which way?
Whatever works for-
Since that's a work, work day and so forth, let's do it at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Everybody time to get on-
We can do that.
Get summer in.
Let the poor group from Kansas City go first.
Yep.
Then spend the night.
Oh, there you go.
Little tours.
All right, I'll see what I can get put together.
Okay.
Work back to you as soon as I, you know. Um, the only other thing I have is just informational to let you know that the middle school softball, uh, will be practicing at our Corey Park Ball Diamond, um, from, and I think they actually started yesterday through, um, the end of their season. Um, they needed a place to practice, and the, there was nothing scheduled there. Uh, they'll be practicing in the afternoons. I think it's from two forty-five to four thirty. So it doesn't interfere, it doesn't interfere with our league's practicing or anything like that. There, there wasn't anything scheduled at that time. So if you see somebody there, it's the middle school softball.
We're pretty excited. This is a new sport for us at the middle school.
That's great. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Terry? All right, we're gonna move on to item nine, to Maintenance and Grounds Director Brad Boosikrueg.
Good evening. Uh, we have your, my report from, for, uh, basically July, uh, report.
Been a busy mowing season.
Yes, it has.
Haven't had any time off.
It's getting worse.
Getting worse. Any questions for Brad? What else, Brad?
That's all I have.
That's, you're, you're, you're easy. We're gonna go to item ten, to Chief of Police Greg Hottishell.
I'll try to keep it as easy.
As brief, as brief as possible.
Absolutely. The only thing I have this evening is my monthly report as well. Um, we did have a few participants in the ride-along program, some people that actually came out and did some repeats, which was kinda nice. Um, one of the other things that stood out was, uh, one of our detectives has done a little bit of overnight work with the drug task force around town. So, um, things are kinda starting to ramp up with that, which is-
Good.
Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? We're good.
Am I miscellaneous?
I'm sorry?
Am I the miscellaneous?
In the ride-along? Old chalk.
Actually, I got a question. How's your range coming?
Uh, it's built. We've used it.
Excellent.
We've had people qualify on it. It's gonna work out pretty good.
Looks real nice and functional?
Absolutely. I think I'll have to visit.
Good.
Mr. Gevers, are you ready for us?
Um, I have a little more than the other two.
More, a little more, okay. Go ahead.
First item I have is my monthly reports.
Any questions?
I want to say the sidewalk project on Steinhegen turned out nice.
Yeah, it does, it does look nice.
It does look nice.
And then, um, next item is my cinder bids. Need approval for, uh,
Bobby Holzer, he's the one that usually gets the cinders.
I make a motion that we approve the cinder bid to, for Bobby Holzer in the amount of four thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Sluter to approve the, uh, city cinder bids to Bobby Holzer Trucking, Morton, Missouri, in the amount of four thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any, uh, questions or concerns? Roll call.
Alderman-
You have, oh, wait a minute. You might have-
Only question I have has nothing to do with this part. Is, is that an increase from last year?
The, last year, we, we, uh, used, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight tons of cinders. So we're, we're close.
Is it about the same per ton?
Uh, that is a couple of dollars more.
Okay.
I didn't write that price on what it was last year.
Roll call.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
We might need more cinders since we can't afford salt.
Ooh.
Huh.
Salt really, we're not.
Yeah.
Next item I have is a salt bid.
Obviously under fifteen. Or we would've budgeted more.
Well, but that's, that's the budget for salt and cinder, right?
That's, that's correct.
So between the two, we're at like thirty-six.
And we're, uh, last year we used a hundred and fifty-two tons of salt. We still have some on hand. We're also with cinders, we still have some on hand. Um, a hundred tons of salt.
So is this up to three hundred?
Up to three hundred.
So we, so we could actually come in half, based on usage, so that's a lot of the-
Right. I do the three hundred tons just in case we're locked in at the price, because we don't, a lot of people are having a hard time getting bids on salt in the counties.
Okay.
I just, on the unit price, you know what, what-
I'm sorry?
You have any, any idea what the unit price was last year?
It's almost ha, it's almost doubled.
Doubled.
Yeah. A little less than double.
Supply and demand.
Yep.
They supply it, we demand it.
Any other questions on the salt bid?
Let's just pray for an easy winner.
Yeah, there, I do too. I take a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, salt bid from Morton Salt for, um, price of one oh seven point oh nine per unit cost. We're gonna buy a hundred tons.
That's correct.
All right. For ten thousand seven oh nine. Just put the ten thousand seven oh nine.
Motion by Alderman Kessler, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the, uh, low salt bid from Morton Salt Inc. in the amount of?
Ten thousand seven oh nine.
Ten thousand seven hundred and nine dollars.
I will not medicate next time.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next item I have is approval for Pinkney Street sidewalk project of the reduced scope.
Could somebody explain to me where this sidewalk is? I mean, I drove up Pinkney tonight. The only thing I can figure out is from the entrance to the high school all the way down to Warrior?
Warrior, Warrior Ridge.
Warrior Ridge. So it doesn't go all the way down to Warrior, it goes to Warrior Ridge?
No. That's correct.
Like halfway through that neighborhood.
How is there a lot of walking traffic on it?
There's a ton of kids that walk that to get to the school.
What school?
To go to Rebecca Boone. All those kids that have to walk-
Rebecca Boone.
Rebecca Boone, or go up to Warrior Ridge.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Warrior Ridge, right down, they have to go all the way down that road to get to school. Is that?
Gets quite a bit of traffic.
What, what, what grades are they in there?
K through five.
K through five. So you've got K through five walking down Pinkney with no sidewalk.
You would think it'd be far enough away to be bust.
Not quite.
Is, is, is your sidewalk bid here that, that your staff's gonna do it, or are we gonna-
No, that's contracted.
Contracted out.
Gary, this is the one that we tried to get the school to go in with this, but the, all the school people went out and walked.
Did an audit on it.
Right. And they didn't feel like the traffic warranted it, but I don't know.
Well, they did it, and wherever they did it, I mean, they, I don't see them considering the cross-country that runs through there, the, uh, after-school activities that do-
I've had a lot of feedback of people basically worried about getting ran off the road through there.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, to me, it's, it's amazing that the school doesn't think it's a priority, but the city does, that's a-
But we just, they were basing theirs on who's currently using it, how many are not using it because they don't feel like it's safe.
Isn't that the recycling question?
Oh, my gosh.
Maybe we ought to do a survey on this before we approve this project.
So the, the forty-seven thousand oh five is, is the amount, the, uh, construction amount?
That, that'll, that'll go out for bid, but yeah, that's what, and I'll have to get the original plans from Lewis and Beatty.
Okay.
So we're looking at something under budget from you?
Uh, I can't answer that question.
Wishful thinking. We need a motion on that.
We need, need a motion for him to go out for bid?
To approve the, uh, sidewalk project.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the sidewalk project with a budgeted amount of sixty-five thousand. Isn't that what we want?
Forty-
No, I'm looking at this forty-seven. I'm, I'm-
Forty-seven.
Going out for bids.
It, it's just gonna go out for bid through, and then-
Oh, that was the engineering estimate. Okay, forty, forty-seven thousand.
Well, you just want it to go out for bids.
Yeah, do we have to put a number on it?
Don't put a number on.
We just want to make a motion that we go out for bid on the sidewalk-
I'll second that.
-project on Pinkney from the high school to Warrior.
I feel like we've done this like a thousand times this year.
Do it once more.
I think so.
Second.
No, you made the-
No, she fixed it. I fixed hers.
Huh?
I fixed her motion.
You fixed it? Okay. And Alderman Clark seconded, or, or did you second it?
I did.
Okay. We're good. You got, have you got the motion down? Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Ock?
You're just going out for bid?
Well, I know. I was trying to think if we need a survey on this first. Yes.
Alderman Clark?
I did the survey, and yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Kessler?
Same issue.
Motion carried six zero.
Not, not really, 'cause this one, we've all had more feedback.
A quick report on, are all our wells functioning and...
Yes.
And running and full, full speed? Okay. Anything else, Guy?
That's all I have.
Before we move on, can I ask you a question about your monthly report? I don't know if this is your question or Terry's question. On the top of the report, you know, it says customer service requests told from the finance department originated and the water department originated. What's the difference?
The ones that originate from the finance department are typically someone who comes in and questions their bill.
Okay.
And so, then a work order is placed to have somebody go out and check it, to make sure the reading's accurate, blah, blah, blah. I'm not sure what else those would be.
That would be it. And a lot of them are radio reads, so what the readings are, that's pretty much that. A lot of issues come in. In fact, if you have, actually have to manually read it, you gotta read the digits, then that, that's where, like, a reread would come into effect.
And, and so, are they being originated off of, like, the website? So, if I had a problem with them...
If, if you, if you had, if your water bill is high and it was over fifty percent of your normal usage, then that, in our program, it'll spit it out. And then it'll come down to us, then we'll look at it and see if it's a radio read, or a touch read, or a manual read, and then we'll address it from there.
And he meant spit it out.
But yes, we do go back out and recheck the meters and make sure the readings are correct.
Is that it for Guy? Anybody else got any questions? Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Jack, you're on.
Dean and Mayor Board, first item I have is the monthly report. You have any questions?
Yeah, we picked up another house.
I see that.
Two for the year. You need Dad's staff one?
We're squeezing the net. There's gonna be more, too. I'm confident. We have another basement underground for the years out.
Good.
Three, okay.
We need three to equal last year, though. Three, boy.
The building frenzy.
Any, any questions for Jack on that report?
Let me read.
How about citywide fall cleanup example?
Uh, next item I have is some preliminary information for a citywide fall cleanup. Proposed date would be October, Saturday, October the eleventh, where we'd have a tire recycling event here at City Hall, electronics and appliance recycling event here at City Hall. We keep the yard disposal waste lot open for the residents, so they wouldn't have to come and get the key all day, make that convenient for them. Part of the program would also include flyers showing other areas and local areas that help with recycling, where they can dispose of products. And then we would have a celebration here at City Hall from two to three in the afternoon to thank the residents that participated with some food and snacks and drinks. And I'd also like to give away a couple prizes to help encourage more participation.
Like a couch or mattress?
I have a computer monitor you can give away for recycling bid.
There's all kinds of things we can do. Preliminary stages, looking for input.
How, how do we promote this?
Flyer.
Is it on the website? Is it flyer? Is it, that's mailed out? How do we promote?
It's the all of above.
Um, I got in the mail the other day, a, something from Ameren, where they're going to, they'll, they'll haul off electrical stuff and pay you fifty bucks. And there's, there has to be certain criteria. It has to work, you know, so, and it has to be within a certain age. What they're trying to do is take out of cycle older electronic stuff that's not as efficient. And so, they want, so they'll haul off your old stuff, I guess, assuming you'll buy new stuff. For example, we have an extra refrigerator in a garage we never use, so we thought, well, they're gonna give us fifty bucks to haul it off. I wonder if somebody could check with them on that, and then...
I definitely will.
And then when we promote this, maybe we can throw that on there, too? Because I think that would be, you know, we were talking about bulk earlier. I think that would be a great way for people to give fifty dollars and get rid of it. Now, there are certain qualifications, so you have to call in and you have to set it, and it can't be older or newer than a certain age, and it has to run and stuff like that. But I think it'd be, if people didn't know about that, it'd probably be worth reemphasizing that, 'cause they just might've pitched the postcard.
Do you have that? Could you scan it and send it to me, so I could try to track them down?
Sure.
Get more information on it. That'd be very helpful.
Jack, do you have an estimated cost to the city for a citywide cleanup date?
As far as the tires go, it'd roughly be between two dollars and two dollars and twenty-five cents a tire. Hard telling how many we'll get. That's why I suggested putting a maximum of ten to keep somebody from pulling a forty-eight foot trailer in. Full of tires.
Are they gonna need to show identification?
Yes, they have to show proof of city residency. The electronics and appliances and that, we were hoping to collect them here and use city staff to take them to the recycle area and hopefully get some money back from that to possibly use it for the explorers or, like, Special Olympics or whatever, try to help generate money for the police department on that. The citywide disposal, I don't believe you guys charge for residents to take anything out there.
Yard waste?
Yeah. For the yard waste area. There'd be some small cost if we put up some signage and put out some flyers and that. And then the little celebration here at City Hall would have some small cost, but I believe we have a budget that we should be able to easily stay, stay within.
What do you do to dispose of the computer stuff that comes in?
Uh, there's a couple different places that we can take it to. The only thing that, on the monitors or the TV screens, there's a charge for that, and I'm trying to work on getting agreements to reduce the fees to help us out.
I'll, I'll send you some, 'cause we recycle that stuff all the time for free. They just take it?
Even the monitors?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd greatly appreciate that, too, then.
I'll send you a good one for you.
And we're just mainly wanting to know if this, this was part of the strategic plan, and if, you know, if you guys are still interested in this. Try to get one for the, for the fall. I think that'd be a good weekend before you start in with Halloween and Thanksgiving and all that. It's a good time to, hopefully it'll cool off. Everybody can get out, get some yard work and that done, get things out of the yard and garage. And just wanting to know, if you want me to proceed and move forward on it, then I can bring you back some concrete information.
I don't, I don't think that's any problem. I, I get comments throughout the community about, when, when are y'all gonna sponsor your citywide cleanup? People look forward to that, so I think we need to move forward with it.
Fantastic. Next thing I have is, I had a meeting with a couple of the local builders and an architect. At the request of Kevin Gerloff, he probably was talking over different things regarding the permitting process, state of the city, and different procedures and that. There was, there's a lot of misunderstanding or misinformation out in the community. So, he called to get some clarification, and during our discussion, he, he requested if I take the time to sit down with a couple of the local builders and him. And basically, we met here in the chambers and went through, instead of just having another complaint session, I turned it around to try to go through, what's the main things that, that you feel the city is not doing that would help you be productive in, in getting more, more buildings built, more homes in the town? And the, the main thing that they were requesting or wanting us to consider looking at is what's considered master planning, where if they turn in a plan for review, they would pay the review fee once for the full set of plans. And then if they build that same identical house, that same set of plans in the future, the city would waive the review fee so it's not included in the second or third or fourth time they build that same house.
Does the plan have to be, the floor plan have to be identical?
Well, they would turn in a full set of plans, and it would say, here's this plan with elevation A, you know, two-car garage, or here's this plan elevation B with a three-car garage. But, but the master set of plans that would include all the options would be reviewed and approved once. Then in the future, if they would apply for a building permit, they could just say what model it is, what elevation, how many car garage. So theoretically, it would have already been looked at and, and approved once. And the average plan review fee is probably right around $300, so it is a savings to them. So, I, there is other cities that do this. I can see where it'd be a benefit to them. It would definitely be a way to show that this Warnton's wanting to help stimulate new construction here in town, and it would really be no cost to the city, because the plan, the plans get sent out, so the engineer that's reviewing them, you know, he would review it once instead of repeating.
At the present time, I don't see it as being a problem for the city, when we only got two billing permits for the year, so... But I mean, at some point in time, I'm, I'm sure that's going to change, and I can see where it'd be beneficial to them.
Well, like I said, it, it might be just one positive to help getting people to come back in and, and consider popping basements in in town. If, if they can save a couple hundred bucks here or a couple hundred bucks there, maybe it can lean them to come here instead of nearby community. Second thing they was asking about is our, our permit fee schedule. Per code, it's based on the most recent published International Code Council table. And that, that's the multiplier. It's based on the square foot each. And they were saying that there, that the table right now shows for the single family to be roughly a hundred and ten bucks a square foot. Or five B for residential one and two family. It comes out to about a hundred and ten dollars a square foot. I've done some real preliminary price checking just off of different builders' advertisements, and it ranges anywhere from ninety-two to ninety-five bucks a square foot, just from their ads, up to a hundred and twenty-three. So, the hundred and ten's probably in that range, but they were at least wanting to know if we would consider, if we can get the data to verify that the real average cost around here was closer to a hundred, if we could put a multiplier on that, so their permit fee would be based on a hundred dollars a square foot instead of the hundred and ten. Just something to consider. Also a way to save them some money and try to stimulate some construction. Like I say, I've got real preliminary information just from ads and that that I've found in the paper online. The Home Builders Association's supposed to be getting me some statistics for pricing in the St. Louis region, plus out in our area, to try to compare. And this is just another item to see if you guys would be interested in even considering it. Trying to, trying to come up with some ways to help, like you said, get more than three or four houses built a year in town. And then the last item, number C, was on yard requirements for occupancy. Basically, right now, we, we want them to have a green yard before we sign off on it. And their concerns or their, their statements was, well, if their contract just calls for them to seed and straw it, and the individual closes on their house, then it should be the individual that bought the house's responsibility to get that yard green, not the contractor.
What's the norm?
The norm?
Yeah.
It, it varies in every town that I check with. Some of them want it green as can be, and it's mowed once. Some of them's fine with just seed and straw. So, it's more a topic to see what, what do you guys feel? What, what do we think? I can understand both sides of the coin. If, if we allow it to be just seed and straw, I think we'd have to put something in writing that says there has to be erosion control in place, whether it's silt fence or straw bales, something to make sure neighboring property does not get, you know, the burden of, of something coming over if the yard's not fully established. But just something to consider.
Yeah, 'cause I look at these four, season one, I really have an issue with trying to understand, because you go into nicer communities, and you don't see seed and straw in nicer communities. You know, they're gonna lay sod or do whatever it is to get it done. It makes the community look better. You don't have erosion issues and all that. And that's something they should be negotiating with the home buyer, as opposed to us going back to the home buyer later on and getting in a dispute with the city of this. So, I, I have, I have my biggest problem with C.
Okay.
I agree with that.
And if it's your guys' wish to, to try to, I mean, right now, we don't require sodded yards. If that's something that you feel is needed, I mean, we could discuss that in the future, too.
Well, I don't know if it has to be sodded, but I, sodded yards do give you a better look in the neighborhood. And they do, you know, I realize it's gonna have costs on them. We're trying to reduce costs, but I just have a hard time having somebody move in the community, buy a home, and all of a sudden get sideways with the city, because maybe the erosion control wasn't properly by the developer, and they didn't know that, 'cause the average person wouldn't know, you know, a seed and straw property, if this is adequate for erosion or not. So, that's, me, it's gonna...
Well, and also, you can seed and straw and be done with it and leave, and you're not guaranteed that that's... We know how that goes, don't we, Brad? Sometimes it takes and sometimes it doesn't. I mean, you don't want the builder to take off and then be done with the project. Bad yard. I, I, I agree there with Gary on that one.
I do, too.
And on B, I'd like to see us run some numbers to see if we start playing around with fees, or is, does that just apply to new homes? So, if it's just applying to new homes?
This, this is on...
We only got three. It's not another issue then, I guess.
And, and like I say, this is also this preliminary information. Any of these items, you want me to get more information to you and bring back? I'll gladly do it. It was just making you aware that I have taken the time to meet with some of the builders to try to help stimulate interest in town.
A definitely makes sense.
Yes. A makes sense. C doesn't. D?
D bothers me a little bit.
Me, too.
And, and I agree with that, but since that was part of our discussion, I wanted to share...
Okay, I, yeah, I think we could be open.
I think it could generate loopholes.
Yes, I do, too.
So, I, I guess I need to understand correctly, before you can sign off and people can enter into the home, the grass has to be up and need to be mowed or something once?
No, not before they, not before they can close on the house, before we close the permit. If, if the builder takes out the permit...
Can they move into the home?
Yeah, they get a temporary occupancy. And then we don't physically close that permit until the yard is established.
So, what happens if, if the grass and seed doesn't work, or the seed and straw doesn't work, and the person moves in and the permit's not closed? Do we have, are we to go back to the contractor?
Well, a lot of the lending institutions will make the contractor escrow the amount for the yard. And then the contractor wants to get that money out of escrow as quick as they can.
This year was a good year for growing grass, but last year, good luck.
Uh-huh.
And that's nobody's fault. And even sod would not, would not do it. So, I, I don't think forcing them into sodding. I do agree, the erosion part should be...
Yeah, I mean, my point was, I didn't want to force them to sod. My point was, if they have money in escrow, they have a motivation to make sure it happens. But that homeowner is, is in a different position. And I would rather have them have money in escrow, where they have motivation to make sure it, it works, make sure there's money there to, yeah.
And not defending, just, just voicing for one of the builders, since they're obviously not here tonight. Their comment was, well, if my contract clearly states I'm gonna seed and straw it once, why is the city making me do more than that?
Because that's the city requirement. Why is the city making you follow the building code?
But if they know that's a city requirement, then that should've been in their contract requirement.
There you go. So, I say, we're just trying to get some clarification.
I know, I agree. But I don't think that's a, that's too tough to ask. I mean, it makes their final product look better, too.
Okay. Well, I can bring back some more information for A, B, and C, or do you need me to do anything else for D? Because like I say, I'm...
Not as far as I'm concerned.
A, B, and C is fine.
Okay.
Sounds like a good meeting, though.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good meeting, though.
Yeah? And hopefully it can put some positive remarks in the community.
Good start. Anything else, Jack?
That's it for me. That's it.
Any other questions for Jack? We got a couple bills to convert to ordinance, and the first bill is bill number fifty-three dash fourteen. We got a couple bills to, uh, convert to ordinance, and the first bill is bill number fifty-three dash fourteen. Need a motion for first?
Call for first reading of bill number fifty-three dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer for first reading of bill number fifty-three dash fourteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Warton, Missouri and McGuire Iron Incorporated for tank painting at Wells four and six.
Make a motion for second final reading of bill number fifty-three dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Holly for second and final reading and passage of bill number fifty-three dash fourteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Warton, Missouri and McGuire Iron Incorporated for tank painting at Wells four and six.
Probably public needs to know that what we're voting on is the painting of, uh, two water towers of a total dollar amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Which tower's at six? Where's six at?
Uh, that, that one is, the first one is on Ashland, but that's the one with the antennas.
And where's twelve? Or number four?
Now you got me on this.
Four is Ashland, six is Powell.
Okay. On Powell, okay.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castle?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item thirteen B, bill number fifty-four dash fourteen.
Call for the first reading of bill number fifty-four dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer for first reading of bill number fifty-four dash fourteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between WM Financial Strategies and the city of Warton, Missouri to provide advisory service on the refinancing of two thousand five and two thousand nine certificates of participation.
Make a motion for the second final reading and passage of bill number fifty-four dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Holly for second and final reading and passage of bill number fifty-four dash fourteen.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between WM Financial Strategies and the city of Warton, Missouri to provide advisory service on the refinancing of two thousand five and two thousand nine certificates of participation.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castle?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session to discuss personnel and real estate.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Castle, seconded by Alderman Dryer to move to executive session to discuss personnel and real estate. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Castle?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried. We adjourn to executive session.